I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM. Members present this evening are myself, Mayor Marl, Councilmember CEO, Dylan, Gearbaum, McClellan, and Mayor Protam Tahr. Councilwoman Mitchell is sick this evening, so she will be absent from both the work meeting and from the regular meeting. From city staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Treasurer Bennett, Deputy Treasurer Finance McDonough, Technology Support Coordinator Schonk, and Parks and Rec Director Scruggs. Also joining us is our legal counsel, as well as our -- will be joining us momentarily. But at the table this evening, we also have Gary Mays and Dan Lawrence. Gentlemen, we appreciate you being with us. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Who wants to make it?
Thank you. Councilmember CEO, is there a second?
I have a question.
Please.
Did we decide we were having two public comments at the last meeting?
We did not. We -- I thought we agreed that we were going to flip it from the --
We're just going to flip it and just have one at the beginning?
Correct.
Just one at the beginning, but thank you.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Dylan. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. As Councilwoman Dylan mentioned, we have now flipped the public comment periods at our work meeting from the end to the beginning to allow people an opportunity to raise a question or concern that hopefully can be addressed during the duration of our meeting. So at this time, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Please use the microphone at the podium to my left.
Hello, Mary Hess. And regarding the rec center, we -- the city has a lot of things that you will have to put money out for the health, safety, and welfare of our city. And of course, the big one is the sewer plant. I would hope -- I really feel that our recreation center gives recreation to this whole part of the county. And I think the county has been very remiss in not helping us. It's a very expensive endeavor, and I would hope that, God forbid, we have something in Wildwood, like a big pipe go out or something. I think that if it can be put off till next year, I would hope it would. And hopefully, that there'll be a committee -- we have committees for a lot of other things. Go and petition the council, or the Wasna County, as far as them looking into having part of our recreation center. We do service the school area, which is about 100 square miles, as far as the same cost as what the residents and the taxpayers are paying. And so, that I would -- thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Other additional citizen comments? No, then we move on to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is the rec center roof. Mr. Campbell, do you want to begin? Then we'll turn it over to Director Scruggs. And I would remind my council colleagues, as well as our guests, to please speak into the microphone. We are recording tonight's work meeting. Mr. Campbell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you may recall, it's been a few months now, the council voted to work with Mays Consulting to do the design work and to develop the essentially the bid document of the specification and such for RFP for the new roof, which they've done. And as you've seen from, hopefully, you've been able to review the attached information. You can see that the timeline, which was pretty significant if we're trying, if we were planning to try and complete the project yet this year before the bad weather sets in. And so, there's obviously a couple of components. You have the actual, the roof project itself and the overall reconstruction of that, the envelope, if you will, as Gary referred to. So, but then the second component, of course, is the financial piece, and that's another part of this very important piece, of course, but another piece of this work session here. But staff met with Mays Consulting last week to review the drawings, to review the specifications and such, along with City Attorney's Office, which we did and made, they've made appropriate changes to those documents going forward. They're going to, obviously, I don't want to steal their thunder, because they've done a lot of the heavy lifting here. But I'll let them talk, talk to you about what they found, what they think the estimate's going to be. Of course, that cost estimate is included in your packet. And so, we'll just kind of go from there. But and as you saw in my cover memo, as well as my communique, we are, because of the tight timeframe, requesting if council deemed it appropriate to consider taking action this evening at the regular meeting to move forward for the next step. So unless there's questions for me, I would turn it over to Mays Consulting.
Mr. Scruggs, do you have any additional comments?
No, it's time.
Okay. Gary, Mr. Mays, do you want to begin? Again, if you make sure to speak directly into the microphone, make sure it's illuminated green at the base.
Okay.
It is working, so.
Do you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. We've gone through quite a lot of work already in the design stage, you know, for the facility. And, you know, we're looking at the whole building envelope because the wall structure wasn't really designed like it should be for a nadatorium or a, you know, facility like this where you have a lot of humidity inside. I think we talked about that in some of my last meetings. So we came up with a very good design now to solve the issues. We'll be using, like, for the exterior walls, those will be a foam filled panel. I don't know, we have a sample here of, it's over here on the three inch thick panel. What the panels that are on there now, the way they're assembled, they're, it just has a loose fiberglass material within the, between the metal skin on the inside and the outside. And that fiberglass, when it gets wet, it falls down. So you're losing a lot of energy out of that building. And then we're having a lot of airflow through the wall assembly, which we've talked, you got huge icicles in the winter time, you've got dangerous conditions around the facility. So what we'll be doing is changing the whole exterior, all the metal on the, on the, actually, your soffit areas, your fascia panels, everything gets changed over to materials like this. And then there's a lot more to it than that. Everything gets sealed so that we don't have any air from inside the building going into your exterior walls. So that's, it's pretty important on a facility like this. And our roof system also has a vapor retarder completely enveloping the roof down into the wall assembly. We've got some drawings we can show you, too, that actually, so it's, this is same as like if you went with to buy a freezer or go buy a refrigerator, you always have a liner inside of a refrigerator or freezer so your humidity and air don't go out into the exterior. That's the same basic principle. And so, we, we're not selling you a refrigerator or freezer, but we're, but we're doing it providing you the same type of conditions with the foam filled system. So we've got a good assembly. We were also going to be, we've had a standard 20-year warranty on a 60 mil product for the roof. We're putting in an alternate for a 30-year roof. It's a 90 mil product on the roof. And we've pretty much got the design, you know, down so that it's about ready to build right now if we, you know, get authorization to move forward. We've gone through, you know, the budget. And maybe Dan, would you want to, once you, let me pass it over to Dan Lawrence here. Dan's an engineer with our firm, a very good engineer, and he's, you know, worked on the budget. So let me move it over to Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, as Gary said, we put together the, finalized the estimate there last week. And for doing the entire roof system, the metal wall panels, we've also included cleaning the masonry, doing some minor repair work to the masonry, just to make it all look nice when it's done. And then we've also included painting the interior of the nadatorium, which is just the roof deck, the part you see, the ceiling, the bar joists, and then the band of board around the top that's had some deterioration to fix that up and paint that, all within the same project. The idea being that the roof and metal wall panels are all completed first. And the painting, we need to do that while the nadatorium, the pool needs to be shut down for a short time period to do that work. So we're planning on that after the roof project was complete. So for all of that work, you know, the estimated cost for construction, our professional services, you know, to bid out the work, to over provide construction administration services, onsite observation for all phases of the work. And then we've also included, you know, owner's contingency in there is $1,470,247, with the actual construction part of that being $1,191,000.
Anything else, Dan?
I don't, I don't have anything else.
Gary?
Dan, you may want to pull out the drawings so we can show them what different colors, different options you would have. If we're going to, I'll pass this around.
We have some, we have --
You have these?
We have it.
Okay, you've got it all right. Okay, then you already understand what I was going to get at. And we can change the looks of the facility so it looks like you have a brand-new facility, you know. So I think that would be nice, too. You may want to change the appearance of the facility. So I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone would have.
Okay, we'll open it up for questions in just a moment. Again, I'll give you an opportunity. Director Scruggs, if you care to make any comments at this time?
Um.
Make sure you get the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Boris?
The only comments that I really had, I mean, obviously, were, let me find my notes real quick. Were concerned with, you know, the amount of money that this takes in order to do this. You know, I'm very comfortable with Mays, with the reputation they have and with the references that we have. I believe from listening to them that what they're doing, or the things that we're going to change on here, are going to be a permanent fix for us. We're not going to have the ongoing issues like we've had. I think that along with the costs that this is going to take, I think, you know, I kind of alluded to some, some things that we could do internally, some changes regarding membership fees, amenities that we offer to our, to our members, really doing another marketing push towards our, our Celine School District to get more members in and to continue to service our community. Those, those things will be coming to you fairly soon. Those will be revenue type of generation ideas that I think will be very positive and can help our bottom line in the long run. Also, you know, we've talked about, you know, different other funding sources or donors or whatnot. And, you know, we have been, you know, brainstorming and meeting with several over the past month or so. And I don't have anything to report back at this time, but, you know, talks are ongoing and really, you know, making, making some headway, trying to get some additional revenues into the, into the building. So at this time, I mean, our, our professionals are, have done a great job of laying everything out, and I think it's a, it's a good, solid project.
Gary, please.
When I was here at one of the last council meetings, we also talked about the HVAC, the Dectron unit.
Yes.
And we just got the report in today. And what, because we were worried about, we were talking about a $500,000 cost, we didn't know. Well, they came back, and they've got a total of $16,500 to bring that equipment up to standards. So we're in good shape with the equipment, $16,500. That's a lot better than that $500,000 that they were kicking around. So if you want to bring that up?
Thank you. Appreciate you sharing that. That's very useful. I'm going to start each round of questions with Councilwoman McClellan because she has an important errand she needs to run a few minutes after seven. So I'll start with Councilwoman, Councilwoman McClellan, excuse me, and with Mr. Gearbaum and myself. And we'll, we'll see what questions or concerns you all have. So Ms. McClellan.
Yeah. My first question is the full-time onsite construction observation. It says that it's optional, but in the budget, it's included? Is that correct?
Yes, that is included in the budget.
Okay. Why are we, maybe that's a question for you. Are we concerned as an option and having an outside observation, or?
Well, it's optional just because it's an optional, it's, they don't require it. I believe I would propose and suggest very heavily that we do have it. But again, it's just, it is an option from their menu, if you will, of the services they provide. So, but no, I certainly think it's needed to do that.
Okay. Does it make sense to have your company observing your own work or having an outside?
They're not, they're not observing their own work.
They're observing the contractors?
Correct.
Okay. I think that was it.
And they're, they're working for us.
Okay. And then I see the color selection here on our, that was included in our packet. Is there actual samples we can look at for these?
Yes, there will be color samples once we select the actual manufacturer of the panel. They have multiple, you know, colors. There's a color chart, and we, you'll actually select the color, the actual color you want from, there's different shades of blue, different shades of all these different colors. And I'd like to make mention, too, of your previous question. Building like this, it is so critical to have everything built correctly. That's why we like to have an onsite construction monitor that's experienced and knows what he's looking for, making sure the contractor is assembling it as we've drawn it or designed it. Because the only time I ever have a problem on a project is when we're not there witnessing everything. Something can get hidden in between every week or two that we're out there. When you have somebody onsite, they document everything every day, they photograph everything every day. It's just so much better for, for the owner. We want to do it right once, so.
No, I agree. I just wondered why it was considered an option, so that was just a question. Thank you. I think that's it for me right now.
Ms. McClellan, can I ask you a question?
Mm-hmm.
Regarding the color scheme?
Sure.
Or color options, rather? Do you have a preference or an opinion on that?
I would think these two. I don't like this one as much.
Go ahead.
From a designer standpoint.
She likes the, sort of the existing matter, the darker blue.
Historic, not that it's historic, but.
Thank you. Mayor Protam Tahr?
Yes, thank you. So my, my main question was about the onsite, full-time onsite observation as well. So that, that's been answered mostly. So that does not place what you described as the periodic visits and updates and tracking. That's a, it's a separate thing.
That's a separate issue.
And regarding colors, I have found over the years that as a sort of normal, non-trained person, I like certain colors, but colored, professional color consultants do a far better job than, than non-trained people. So I would suggest when we get to the point of choosing a color, that perhaps some professional advice about that would be useful. You know, it's, it's, these colors are nice, but I don't know how they'll look with the rest of the building and the brick. And even if I did, I'm not really the, the person. With all due respect to my council colleagues, I don't think any of us, except perhaps Ms. McClellan, has any training in this area. So that would, that would be, that's just a suggestion. And I did notice there's a, of course, on page, no, pages aren't numbered. Okay, so this is the second page of the May 17 memo to Todd. At the bottom of the page, conduct periodic site visits. We have allowed for 18 in Perin's, 14 periodic site visits over an estimated 14-week construction period. So there's a typo that needs to be fixed. It's 18 visits over 14 weeks, right? Or is it 14 visits?
We've basically tried to reduce this down for our time construction, we pushed the contractor real heavily on that. That's what's went on. This was, we've been, you know, this was modified, I think, from our original proposal, and we were starting a lot later, so we're trying to make it all happen.
So is it 18 or 14 visits? Because it, both, both numbers are given here.
I believe it's 14.
Okay. So the written-out 18 is actually the, needs to be changed. Okay.
We shortened up the schedule.
Okay.
Thank you for catching that, Mayor.
No. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Dylan?
Thank you. I also want to touch on the onsite construction and just sort of figure out that basically at $83,000 over 14 weeks, you're looking at paying this person almost $6,000 a week. That seems astronomical. Is there other fees that are associated with that?
I think what you have in there, you've got all the expenses, lodging, all this sort of thing for the individual. They have reports to do throughout there, so they're going to have a lot of hours in this. I don't, I don't know if that's, that was the number that was put in here, but.
It just seems like an astronomical number when you break it down to that point.
Yeah, this may be something, too, that I need to get back and check on, but make sure.
Okay. So I guess what I wanted to understand about this person, they're not actually doing work onsite. They're observing and comparing blueprints to production, correct?
Yeah, that's part of what they do, yes.
And then they're reporting to the project manager who's also doing that, correct? From the construction side.
Yeah. The project, our project manager, like if Dan's involved, he'll be coming in like once a week to start with. And then I think we decided after a few weeks of that, then he'd be in every two weeks. So you have your onsite observer there that, you know, that works hand in hand because he's their eyes and ears onsite, because you don't want to pay for Dan to stand there all, all the time either. Because that would cost you more than the onsite observer. So I'm trying to, you know, reason this. So, yeah, he, he is going to be there at the, you know, beginning of the shift, working throughout what all was going on, documenting, photographing, and, you know, throughout the entire project. And then he'd be doing a daily report, and then you'll end up with a weekly report. Each time we do an in-progress meeting, you'll have a complete photograph report that goes with that. That is, that explains, that's a lot of what it is.
I guess I'm just trying to, because it's more for your benefit than for our benefit. Yes, in the end, we all want a correctly built building. But it's covering your liability?
No.
No? I guess I'm just not quite understanding.
Let me get legal counsel on this. Mr. Smith, do you want to maybe park over here next to Director Scruggs and borrow the microphone from the gentleman from Mays or Mr. CEO?
In the past, we've had some problems with some construction projects because not always is the construction done in performance with the bid specs and the plans. And this particular construction project, as it goes on, every time the contractor's working, the work's going to be covered up as they go along. So you need somebody there every time, all the time the work's being done, to observe that it's being done right. And in this case, they're going beyond what we normally see in these kinds of projects because they're planning to photograph and film it and, and put together a record as to how every seam goes together, how everything gets aligned, what kinds of fasteners are used, whether the caulking goes in right, and all of that kind of thing, to make sure that in this project, particularly because everything's hidden as it goes along, that we're getting what we're paying for. You're paying a million and a half dollars to have this done, and you're better paying the additional amount to have somebody observe it as it goes along to make sure it's not, it's done right. Because minor little gaps will lead to major weatherproofing kinds of problems, and you'll result in the same kind of roof failures and condensation and other kinds of things that we've observed. So it's really important, I think, and Todd thinks, to make sure that this one's done correctly.
Now, have we done this with our other past projects?
We, we didn't do it previously on this roof. I know in going through the past bid specs and so forth, it wasn't done in the same way.
Okay. So have we done this before on other projects?
Well, so what I can, not since I've been here before, like, for instance, an example is the DPW roof. I believe that was an option, and I believe, again, without going back, but I believe that was for some, to save some dollars, that was possibly.
Do it.
Well, not, not the, not the day-to-day stuff, not, not the day-to-day. You had the construction management team, but you didn't have the data, my understanding, did not have the day-to-day observation inspection that we're proposing currently. And when we, when we repaired, when we had the repairs done to the roof of the rec center, I'm sorry, DPW, we did have our, our consultant, wasn't there daily, but he was there frequently to make sure it got done properly. But I would certainly, because of the points that Mr. Smith just made, I mean, it's, it's critical that we do it right the first time. And, I mean, so it's just, it's probably even more for us than it is for them. I mean, that, I mean, because we want to make sure we get a good quality roof, that we don't want it to fail, and we don't want to have to, again, we don't want to go out, you know, have to, if it fails, short order, and to go after, you know, have to spend the dollars, the time, the resources to go after the contractor. You know, they're, they're working for us. They're like having our eyes up there. We don't have those resources or that specialty, for that matter, to be up there and making sure that's, to ensure that it's done properly.
And what is Mr. Rubel's role in this project? Because in the past, hasn't he done this?
No.
Okay. So does he have a role in this project?
He assists us in reviewing the, the RFP process, the specifications a little bit, and make sure that the procedures are followed as far as to, to, to bid the project out and that type of thing.
But he doesn't have a day-to-day role in this?
No, he does not.
Could I also say one thing? When you're doing a project like this, you always come into hidden conditions, like we have decking that we're having to, and we know we have corrosion in certain areas. We have to be able to observe that decking because of the unit prices, the contractor, and we put in an allowance for so much decking, but we have to actually document exactly how much decking is going to be changed. Somebody has to make some decisions onsite. So it's, and one of those things that you really need to be there 100% of the time to be able to do that, you know, throughout. If there's any kind of hidden conditions, we, we need quick communications, and we don't have anybody order the site unless we have a person onsite there to do that for us.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to kind of jump around to where I have notes here. As far as the interior painting, is that required? Is there a reason why we're tagging that on right now? It's not a necessity of this project, correct?
On the decking. On the decking, if you go into the nadatorium right now and look up, you'll see peeling paint. And on the cement board, which is the board around the whole perimeter, you'll see a lot of leaking and rust, rust marks and whatnot. So it's basically, it's a, a way to seal that, the decking and everything, and make it look better. Right now, you would, we're getting paint chips on the ground. They just fall off and whatnot. So it would be an aesthetic and functional use of the paint.
I have no idea, are, are these realistic numbers for paint? I mean, it's not like, you know, I, I have no idea, you know, what's, what's the normal standard on this.
Yeah, this, we actually just bid a project out, and that's what I, I used the numbers from that project, because it's an involved process. You, you've got peeling paint, you can't paint over that. So the process to do that, you've got actually what they call brush blast. You, you've got to get that off there with, with a, basically a sand blaster. That's why the pool would need to be closed during that operation, so they can get that nice and clean. Because if it's not clean, the paint's not going to perform, it'll just peel off again. So the prep work is, is a lot of the work. And then painting it, and then you've got to use an epoxy paint so that the moisture won't go through the paint and start attacking the steel again.
And what is your timeframe for having closed pool to do that, that part of the project?
That would fall. So after the roof is completely done, we would, we would -- hopefully like early, um, like right after Labor Day, as soon as the kids are back in school, we would, we would have that shut down at that time. That's our slowest time of the year.
In eighteen, Carla?
I'm sorry?
In eighteen.
Yeah, in two thousand eighteen, I'm sorry. So, September two thousand of eighteen, yes.
But what period of time do you think it'll take to do that project? Is it three days, three weeks?
It, it's gonna be a time period probably of at least two weeks to have that pool shut down, possibly three weeks. And, and if it's two weeks, the contractor probably would need to work, you know, at least two shifts, if not three shifts on some days to do that work.
Um, okay, moving on. Um... Um, just, some of the things on your fee schedule seem a little skewed. Um, your admin assistant is billing out sixty dollars an hour. That just seemed a little high.
That sixty dollar, okay, that's over, I'm sorry. Yeah, the sixty dollars a, an hour, that's, uh, you know, putting together reports and, and all this, it's, uh, there's not that many hours of that, but it, you know, it does take dedicated time to do it.
But sixty dollars seems excessive, is that your opinion? Okay. Um, uh, oh, then on your timeframe, I had a question about, 'cause theoretically, we are approving and advertising this project prior to receiving final contract documents. So, does that matter? I mean, the timeframe based on what's here?
That is correct. If you approve it today, then we don't have them one hundred percent done. Uh, really, we've got them about ninety percent. I think the set over there is, is fifty percent. I did bring an updated set. That is about ninety percent, uh, complete. Um, my experience, it's not unheard of to, they, they may approve it off of a partially complete set of drawings.
Okay.
Just, just to be clear, we have gone through all of the terms of the contract documents, so what, what they're looking at are some of the technical specifications that they're cleaning up yet. But the contract terms themselves, the, the bid requirements, what the contract's going to say, whose approvals are needed and, and so forth, all of that's been, uh, in the last several days. We've got that at probably a hundred percent as of this afternoon.
Okay. Um, just a strange question. What is a low-slope roof substantial?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that in front of me. It says low-slope roof substantial.
Yes, by Friday, October thirteenth.
Substantial.
I guess what is a low-slope roof? What is that?
That is, that is the roof on the facility.
Okay.
Yeah, they, it's low slope. It's not, it's sloped, but very little slope, like one quarter of an inch over every foot. That's, that's just how we refer to it in the industry.
Now, is this real, this is replacing the entire roof on the entire complex?
Yes.
So, there's no matching up to anything old? It's all new?
That's correct. It'll all be new, all have...
All new, the entire roof, okay. And I know at one point, Mr. Seale, you commented about having to raise stuff that's on the roof. Is that still an issue?
Yeah, there's, we had, we had a...
I said, we, we looked at that again, that there's two large units that we, we were concerned with, uh, that, that would be more difficult to raise. We found a way not to raise those. There's, um, I think, three smaller units. Two of them are very small, and that's fairly typical in a roofing project. Those would be raised a, a little bit to get the necessary roof flashing height, or the height that unit is above the roof, so that when it snows and stuff, snow doesn't get over the top of that curb flashing.
Okay. And then my last question, I promise, and I'll let it move on. Um, your timeframe, I mean, you're talking about going into November, and we could have a foot of snow in November. How is that going to affect you once you're getting past, you know, October, November with your work schedule? What happens if you can't, I mean, how do you complete in foul weather, freezing, freezing temperatures?
Ideally, we'd like to have, you know, we, that's why I said low roof, low slope roof substantial completion. We're planning on that being done mid-October, uh, you know, sheet metal work, things like that, things where you're not using adhesives and, um, primers, things like that. Those are the things that are affected by temperature. They can go fairly low today. They, they can probably be applied down to twenty degrees Fahrenheit, uh, which will get us pretty late in the year. But really, that, that last time period from mid-October to, uh, mid-November, we're planning on that being the actual sheet metal work, which there's really no temperature limitation on that.
And what about wind? 'Cause I know that's where we've had substantial issues stem from wind. Is that a concern for you?
It, it could be on, on a day that there's, there's high winds, you know, the contractor, they can't get their materials to basically stay in place till they can put a fastener or glue it down. It could be a day that where they, they may not work.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Seale?
You talk about hidden conditions as we go along, and then, but yet your bid document is fairly, um, well, it's fairly descriptive in terms of like the number of square feet or lineal feet of, of, um, various types of products that are being used in this process and that are included in your estimate. Um, is your bid, is your estimate conservative? In other words, is there enough in there to allow for some of these hidden conditions to come up as worst case?
We have put some allowances in a specification, especially for the deck remediation, which could be, there could be areas that require deck replacement, and there could be areas that require, just, the deck's not corroded bad enough yet, but it's corroded, we wanna paint that. So, we have included allowances in there for that. Um, I, I think those allowances are conservative. I'm hoping they're conservative, but you really never know until you get it torn off. Uh, but that's why we put it in. That way, the contractor is bidding on that work and it affects his price. That way, he can't just say, "Well, it's always an ad, so I'm just gonna give a high price." So, so this, I make it conservative, so it could go as a deduct, you know, so the contractor cannot give that abnormally high unit price for deck remediation, 'cause it could get deducted and hurt him in the end.
In your oral presentation just a while ago, you talked about possibly a thicker roof, I think sixty to ninety mil. Does this one point four estimate, uh, talk to the sixty mil roof?
This is for a fully adhered sixty mil EPDM membrane that has a twenty-year full system warranty. So, the roof manufacturer would warranty all of the components, um, up to ninety mile per hour wind speeds. If wind was a concern, uh, the warranty would cover up to, up to ninety mile per hour, and we ask for up to three-quarter inch hail would be covered in that warranty as well.
You also mentioned that we have the full system warranty. We're talking from the vapor retarder all the way up, 'cause you didn't have that in the past. So, we're looking at, at the, at the full system. Then, in addition to that, the manufacturer's system that's on there now has agreed to discount prices, and we have not, uh, you know, we're, we're going out to bid with at least minimum of three different manufacturers, but if they come in with discounted prices, that's gonna make this book out real, look real good. We use real conservative numbers all the way through. We're in hopes the price comes in less than what we've stated, but, uh, and then, and hopefully this manufacturer does as they stated they would, and that'll also help the pricing. So, we won't know till bid day, but they say they, they would.
Are you gonna ask for a ninety mil as an alternate in the bid?
That'll be an alternate, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Um, the only questions I had, in terms of color, my untrained eye initially went toward the lighter blue of the three that you show here. My only thought was with the darker colors, uh, I don't know how this product stands up under the sun, but it seems like darker colors tend to fade more, uh, because of the sunshine, and I didn't know if the lighter blue would stand up better. But really, in terms of my preference, I don't care.
What I would suggest is, once we get to this stage, that we bring samples of the material, and, you know, everybody can take a look at them, or if you wanna, you know, bring in somebody, that's fine too. But, uh, I do have a lot of work with school boards. Sometimes we have the school board people. It's usually the treasurer, usually got a lady treasurer that makes the decision, but that's what happens.
I was on the building committee for the church, and, and the lady who was our consultant there cautioned us. She said things seemed to be going very smoothly, but she says when you get to picking finishes and colors, that will be the most aggravation you'll have as a group.
Thank you, Mr. Seale.
Thanks. Um, I agree with Mr. Seale. Color's not my worry. I'm more worried about spending the one and a half million dollars. Um, when we talk about the, um, the whole bid process and everything, I know we went ahead with this company in terms of doing the design for the construction bid. Why would we not be looking at doing a open bid for the services that oversee the construction and also the construction bid? I know we can do it without necessarily requiring professional, uh, professional services do not require an open bid process, but when we start getting up to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, I get a little weird.
Certainly. A, a big part is the time factor and the timetable, um, and, and I guess, um, the, the detailed discussions we've had with them, um, for the last number of months, um, whether it be here at the, at the, with the past work sessions, um, uh, as well as with staff, um, to move forward with, uh, with them to, to do the, the project for us.
'Cause part of my concern is making sure that we don't run into any concerns from a state perspective, looking at our financials or from our auditors. Uh, 'cause I know that at some point, there should be a dollar level at which we should not exceed when we, when we do these type of bids. Um, at one point, it was twenty-five thousand dollars, something that we used to deal with, but this is getting significant.
Sure. Uh, again, we've been working with, with legal counsel as well, and, um, so they, they seem to be comfortable.
Can I make any kind of fun there, Scott?
Well, there are a few thoughts. Um, one, um, this kind of project's going to require a lot of, uh, or could require a lot of decisions to be made in the field, um, to see whether things need to be replaced and hidden conditions need to be addressed in conformance with the bid specs. Um, we've also got a rather technical project in terms of how it all has to go together and be assembled and so forth, and so going with the same engineer that does the design may provide you some advantage. I've seen projects where they have a different construction engineer than a design engineer, and we end up at the end with this kind of thing. And this, going with the same engineering firm, helps with that problem. In terms of the overall cost of the engineering, I'm not seeing that it's out of kilter with what I've seen on other projects, particularly those that involve the, some real technical aspects to it. But I, you know, you, you raise a good point. I'm not...
Okay. No, um, part of mine, it wasn't so much about the, it's just a total dollar value, and especially when we, we're hiring that physician to do the day-to-day inspection, which from my perspective, I think that's one of our smart ideas to go ahead and do that because of the concerns we had in the past. We did hire Plant Moran Crusia to do some inspecting, and they failed, and so that's where we lost out on our last rope, so I'm glad we're gonna have somebody identified to do that. Um, part of my question on that one, though, is when they're doing their inspections, what guarantees do we have from what work they do in terms of recourse should they fail to do their job? And, and then the other part of it is, what warranties and things and all of that aspect that we know in the last couple of projects failed to get signed off or weren't done according to the manufacturer's standards? Is that all that expectation falling upon this eighty-three thousand dollar position?
A, a lot of it falls on this eighty-three thousand dollar position, but, but to be fair, like any, uh, construction engineering contract, this one says that they're, they're can't guarantee that everything will be done in accordance with the bid specs. They can only guarantee what they're able to see, which is why we want them onsite every day to be able to see it. And, um, they're also doing what other, um, construction engineers don't do. They're gonna be taking photographs and so forth and assembling all of that. And the warranty at the end, as they put it, it's a system-wide warranty. So, again, we avoid this kind of thing where somebody says, "Well, the insulation wasn't done right," or "The membrane wasn't right," or "The adhesive wasn't right." It's all part of one warranty and, and gives us that kind of insurance, assurance and one, um, party to go after than if we have a problem.
'Cause one of my concerns is to making sure that everything gets installed according to the manufacturer's, um, prospectives, 'cause that was the problem with the DPW roof, that it was not done at all according to that perspective, and so, and making sure that happens and back and forth occurs.
Right.
Thank you. Um, again, I think there's some other question about finance. I just wanna know if we ever was able to get any insurance proceeds at all to cover any of this?
No. No, they, yeah, no, they sent us the letter saying, um, basically, no.
Okay. Um, at this point, that's all my questions.
Additional questions?
Well, let me try to, let me try to summarize a bit. Um, you know, the good thing about going last is all the good questions have been, have been asked. Um, first of all, gentlemen, um, Dan and Gary, appreciate your attendance this evening and, and your report and your work on this important issue. Um, I think many of my colleagues, actually all of my colleagues, asked substantive thoughtful, um, questions regarding this project. Um, there is an, there is already a motion enumerated on the, um, agenda this evening to, to move forward. Um, I am, uh, I emphatically support that, that motion and hope that everyone is comfortable considering it when we convene to our, uh, regular meeting at seven-thirty. Um, as was stated, I, I don't, well, I don't have to go on and on and on about this, because we've talked about it, uh, ad nauseam in the past, but, um, clearly some of the issues that happened with the, um, design and installation of the rec center roof, um, it, it's many layers of, of failure and ineptitude. Um, and that's troubling. It, it, it's alarming. Um, I don't find a great deal of, of value in dwelling on that. I think the important thing is to learn from past mistakes. Um, and I think the proposal that's in front of us has sufficient safeguards, um, built into it. Um, I'm not excited or enthusiastic about the cost, but I understand that there is a substantial cost anytime you wanna do something right. Um, and I think that the rec center, uh, and, you know, our city manager's quite articulate on this point. Um, the rec center is, is one of the jewels in our crown. Um, it's one of the things that makes us special and unique as a community. Um, most cities, um, with a population under ten thousand cannot boast the kind of facility that, that we have, and it's something that we should be very proud of. Um, and it's not the only thing that makes us special, but it certainly is one of the things that makes us special. And as I've verbalized in the past, it, it must be preserved. We must, um, find ways to, to put that facility and the services that it provides to our residents on a trajectory where it can be successful and viable in the future. Um, and to the comment that was made, um, during the, the public comment period, I think that that, um, that certainly resonates with me, um, and I'll echo some of the things that Director Scruggs, Scruggs said, excuse me, in her opening remarks. Um, you and I, Carla, have had many conversations, uh, in the last couple of months about how we can, one, increase membership, and two, how we can bring additional revenue streams into the facility. And that's something that, um, we're, we're committed to doing, um, and we're gonna work tirelessly to, to achieve that goal. So, um, unless there's additional questions for, uh, staff, for legal counsel, uh, I am looking for consensus as to whether people are comfortable moving forward on the motion that is enumerated on the agenda this evening. You're good with that? Mr. Har, you're good with that?
I do have one last question, please. When was the temporary roof installed?
Oh, the last temporary, oh, come on. Where, where we just did the repairs, that would've been last, uh, you know the exact date on that, when we, you had photographs and, and all when they were actually did that.
Yeah, the fall.
It was in late in the fall. It was late fall when those were, were put on, and, and that, that, that's worked well. I mean, it's held everything in place, uh, in those areas. Now, they've had some high winds, and, uh, Brian, uh, went up on the roof, and anyway, he said that, you know, even in the high winds, it was holding the membrane down. He said he, he was worried because we had such high winds, and that the membrane stayed, stayed down as far as the way we have it secured. And not that it didn't balloon up, but we have it secured, so it stayed in place. It didn't blow off, so we, it did, did the job.
Because I, I, my question is that, I know it was sort of said that that was a temporary six-month max fix, um, but is there a possibility that we can let that go longer if it's still intact as it is and not rush this? I, I do still have concerns that we're making a very quick decision and...
Maybe I can talk about that. Uh, we know we have corrosion on, on the steel deck, and it's continuing. Uh, when I was asked how long that I'd feel comfortable, I said six months, and, and that, I, I wouldn't change my opinion on that, uh, because all that moisture in the steel is still corroding, and I would hate to let that go and, and lose a roof off of it, 'cause you, you'll lose... Because you'll lose it for the winter if you have the whole thing blow off, because we need to install a roof when the weather's appropriate to install the roof system.
Mr. CEO, comfortable with the motion that's enumerated on the agenda?
I am. I think it speaks of the essence.
Okay. Mr. Gearball?
Because of the emergency situation, I'm still uncomfortable with the bid going out like this in the future. We're gonna have to talk about it, but because of the circumstance, it's gotta happen. I do have some other questions about financing and issues, but that comes up in the next topic.
Okay. All right. Excellent. Gentlemen, thank you. You're gonna hang tight. It was requested of me by the city manager and Lester objections that we would move the, what number, what is the agenda item? We would move Agenda Item 17-91 to the beginning of new business to allow our guests to leave subsequent to that debate and consideration. Does anybody have any objection to that? And that change will be made at our regular meeting. Okay. Thank you all. Gentlemen, why don't you hang tight? There may be some indirect questions that come up that you could help us address. Scott, do you wanna hang tight at the table with us and get some material? Excellent. And we have Warren Kramer, our financial advisor here. Mickey Joe, Joanne, are you gonna join us for this discussion?
I'll start.
Warren, we're delighted to have you here. It's been a while.
Thanks for having us. A lot of new faces. Nice to meet all of you and those who haven't met. Nice to see you again. Scott. You are.
Warren, are you prepared to begin?
I could talk about all sorts of things. I, I, I...
Yeah.
Oh, wow. I think you had distributed in your package some preliminary sizing calculations in connection with the proposed rec project. We've also included a suggested time schedule. But I think what was kind of a new addition was we were looking at the city's outstanding debt, and there was a small issue that you sold in 2007. That alone would not be a very attractive refinancing candidate, but when you combine it with another issue, you lower your issuance expenses per bond, it allows you to save money that you otherwise wouldn't save. Now, it may not sound like a lot of money. 2007 bonds are outstanding the amount of a million, roughly, not to exceed a million seven. And by adding the refunding, you know, to the new issue, again, we're able to lower issuance expenses on a per-bond basis, and we're eking out nominal savings over the remaining life of the 2007 bonds of roughly $67,000 in present value savings of about $58,000. And again, it may not sound like a lot of money, but you're also lowering the issuance expenses relating, you know, to the rec center financing. And you're eking out net after all of the expenses, you know, $67,000, yeah, $67,000 that you otherwise probably wouldn't see. Now, one way to judge the effectiveness of a refinancing is looking at the present value savings. And when I got into the business, your minimum threshold or market convention required a minimum of 2%, which means that the present value savings have to equal at least 2% of the bonds that you're refunding. And right now, based on our estimate of current market rates, we're over 5%. So you're about two and a half times market convention. So even though nominally, it may not seem all that great, it has to be looked at really in its totality, which is lowering expenses relating to the rec center, basically taking the refunding that on its own would not be very attractive and saving, you know, $67,000 that you otherwise, you know, would not be able to save relating to the 2007 bonds. So that was what was kind of the new wrinkle to the sizing calculations that we ran for you, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have. The time schedule that we've put in front of you, you know, is just a suggested time schedule. It is subject to change. One of the things that you'll see that we've done is that we are waiting to finalize the sizing, you know, of the bond issue and the refunding after you have bids in. So, you know, the numbers that you see, you know, really in the sources and uses of funds on page one of the refunding, I mean, the sizing calculations really are estimates, you know, at this point. So everything will be refined when construction bids, you know, are received, the final issue will be sized, and we will revisit, you know, savings at that time. Based on the schedule in front of us, we're pleased, first of all, we're pleased to report that the Fed did not increase interest rates at its last meeting. We're not anticipating an interest rate hike at the next meeting. I think when, you know, the election took place, I think we have to acknowledge it was a very pro-business, you know, cutting tax, pro-business agenda. I think the reality of Washington has set in, so the expectations of inflation have abated somewhat. So, you know, this year, we are anticipating four quarter-point increases by the Federal Reserve. We've had one, and we, I mean, and at best, we may have one more, you know, before year end. So the inflationary concerns that we saw, you know, at the beginning of the year have abated somewhat, which is very good news for you, because this is still, historically, you know, rates are still very low and a very good time, you know, to borrow for this, you know, facility. I know you're concerned about cost, as any steward should be, but in the big picture, these are still very, very attractive rates. Our current estimate, I think we're right around 2.5%. Oh, I lied. 2.54, 2.54%. And then, including all of the issuance expenses, we're roughly about 2.91%. So for a 15-year transaction, that's still very, very attractive. And we try to manage expectations because, again, rates aren't determined until sale, and we won't set the rates until, you know, the second week in July.
Oh, I'm sorry. Should I have been talking into this? Do you want me to repeat what I just said?
You've got a pretty, you've got a pretty loud voice that tends to carry it. I say that with the greatest amount of respect. So he might be the one person immune from the microphone rule.
There is one aspect of the financing that you ought to pay attention to, and that's the scheduling. So our bids are due June 15. We're looking at notice of award on July 5. We're looking at issuing a notice to proceed on July 17. And we won't close on the bond issue until August 2 is what's projected. So we will be issuing, under this schedule, a notice to proceed before we've closed on the bonds. Now, we'll have the bond pricing. We'll have the bond purchase agreement, but there is a risk that between the bond purchase agreement and the time of closing, that the market could blow up and something could happen. We've adjusted our construction contracts and our bid documents to address that, so that our risk is relatively minimal. If between the notice to proceed and the time we close on the bonds, something happens and we're not able to close on the bonds, we end up paying the contractor only for whatever cost the contractor incurred in that interim period. You'll note that the start of construction is August 7, about five days after we close on the bond issue. So there's a possibility of an incremental cost. We think that possibility of that cost is about that big, but it's a little different than we would ordinarily do. Ordinarily, we'd wanna close on the bond sale before we gave the contractor the notice to proceed. But we're doing that again to make sure we get the work underway and get it done. But you just ought to be aware in full disclosure that that's what the schedule calls for.
Thank you for that perspective, Mr. Smith. Ladies, Treasurer Bennett or Deputy Treasurer McDonough, any comments at this time?
There's questions.
Okay. Ms. McCollum had to excuse herself to run her errand, so we'll end with her. Ms. Tahar, or Mayor Brotem, is it okay if I put you on the spot to see if you have any questions or concerns you'd like to raise? And let me first say, this is a time-sensitive matter, but gentlemen and ladies, we do appreciate your thoughtful analysis of this issue. As you know, a strong financial stewardship is a personal goal of mine, but it's a goal that's shared by the entire city council and the city, so this is a good discussion to have. I apologize, Ms. Tahar, for cutting you off there, but the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, first comment about the savings. Any amount of money we can save is a good amount of money we can save. So I, and Joanne is smiling. You knew I would say that, right?
We thought it was worth it.
Yes, yes.
We're glad that you agreed.
Absolutely. And I don't think I have any questions at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Dillon?
Okay. Yeah, I'm a little overwhelmed by the documents. That's why I have you. I do have a question about the timeframe, because I actually had sort of noticed something seemed a little skewed there. Do you feel comfortable, from a legal standpoint, advising us to proceed in this way?
Yeah, I think the, barring something really unforeseen in the financing markets, another 9/11 or something like that, I can't see a situation where we wouldn't close once we have the bond purchase agreement in place. So the risk is relatively small. I also don't think the contractor's going to have incurred a lot of cost. There'll be some mobilization cost. As a practical matter, if something happens and there's a glitch in the market, we'll just wait a few more days to price until the market settles down.
Okay. That was the second part of my question.
Right.
Do we have any control?
Right. We don't have control over the market, but we have control when we go to the market.
Right.
So that's how we would handle it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. CEO?
Mr. Smith, you've cautioned about the volatility between the point when we decide we're gonna go for this and then the final closing date. But that's true no matter when you float a bond. Is that not true?
There's always risk between price and...
Right, right. The only difference is, we will have given the contractor the notice to proceed here prior to the time we actually close on the bonds. But again...
The contractor and the roof.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. It's a...
Right. I understand.
If I were uncomfortable with it, we wouldn't be recommending it.
Very good. Anybody see what happened in the market today as a result of this nonsense going on with computers and the infection in the computers and the apparent hacking of...
It's been going on for about the last week.
Right.
And, sorry.
I wonder if that was a big enough disturbance to affect the market?
I have to confess, I was traveling today, and no one yelled fire from my office.
Okay.
So that's all I can say. But I think the fact that this has been going on, and I think what the number of people affected was about a quarter of a million, and I don't think it's grown from those original estimates. You know, I mean, anything like that is daunting, but I don't think, you know, to answer your question, I don't know. I should just say, I was traveling, I don't know.
Well, maybe, Warren, take a look at CNN. It was big enough news that it became the top headline and bumped Donald Trump's tweets to number two. So...
Wow. Indeed, significant, so. But I was just looking at the news before we came up, and it didn't make our top 10. So...
Very good. Mr. CEO, anything else, sir? Mr. Gearball?
Yeah, there's been all kinds of things going on in the market today, and yet they were talking about banks not putting out as many loans as they've done in the past either, so there's all kinds of craziness.
Scott just said the market was up today, so...
Yeah, and the market's up, so it's all gaming. You just gotta figure out what it is.
It's probably geopolitical fears, I don't know, whatever. Anyway...
This is actually a question for Mickey Joe. Can you remind me what the 2007 bond was for?
A SUE, a SUE bond.
It is a SUE bond. Okay. So we won't have any issue issuing these bonds at the same time, even though they're outside of different funds? Okay. Because they're not general revenue bonds. One is and one isn't. Right? The other question, when you mentioned, okay, so that's one thing. The other one was, the debt that we were paying for this roof and the remodel of the rec center, have we paid that all off, or are we still paying on that?
I think it's '24, '24, I believe.
Last year's '25.
'25.
Great. So...
I can be, but I don't like it when I am. So the current existing debt for the rec center is payable in 2025. We have a fund balance reserved in that bond debt for two years. So, I mean, if you do that, it would be 2023, and then, so we're only talking '17 to 2023.
Well, that's kind of where I was looking to see where, part of the thing is, we already know, looking at the projections, that based on the way that we were projected from the five years for the rec center, it's already eating into that fund balance and will be wiped out by 2022.
That's a separate fund balance. That's a separate fund balance. There's a bond, there's a building, there's a rec center building bond fund balance that is not included in the fund balance that you've seen when we talked with Carla. Her rec center is separate from the rec center bond refinancing.
Okay.
So in their bond refinancing, there's enough for a two-year payment on that bond, that existing bond that, that's not using any of the rec center operation money. We separated the two.
Okay.
If there's any liquidity concerns, one of the things that we can do, and we really haven't discussed this yet, but we can wrap this new debt around the existing debt for kind of total level debt and bring the payments down a little bit, so you won't see the higher payments in the earlier years where the debt service from the two bond issues overlap and then drop off in '24. We can smooth that out, and that's something that we can certainly review with staff at a later point. But if you have any liquidity concerns, we can certainly address those by doing just that.
Can I jump in there, Mr. Gearball?
What would be the disadvantage of that? Basically, what you're doing is you're pushing the debt out a little bit more.
So you'd have lower principal payments.
But you're protracting the payments.
But you would then, you would backload the bond issue.
So you have total level debt with those two issues as opposed to higher debt service in the earlier years, then drop them after the...
Okay. Sorry. No, that's fine. I wanted to make sure we had options on that, because that is kind of my concern, because if we do have that liquidity aspect, it's gonna be a draw on the general fund. I don't wanna see that necessarily being the case, if we can avoid it. Other than that, I think that's all my questions. I appreciate it. I think if we do manage to get those rates the way they are, it'll be beneficial. I understand that really what we're doing is just spreading this cost into the future a little bit more by being able to wrap this around both issuances, so that's one way of basically trying to reduce our costs, so I appreciate that.
Ms. McCollum, can we get the microphone from Ms. Dillon and Ms. Tahar? That was very...
Yeah, sorry. I apologize. And I apologize for not hearing any of the other questions, and this is definitely not my strong suit. So I don't actually think I have any questions, other than, and this may be not a question for you, but, and it may have come up already, and I apologize if it did. Good, Carla. This is more of a question for Carla. I would like to see, you know, obviously, we have to do this. I think there's no real way around it, but if we can look at, I know we had talked about some of the direct marketing issues with trying to get to the 48108 zip codes and stuff like that. I think it would be great if we could target that zip code more than we are currently, just because I think there's a ton of opportunity out there in that area. just because I think there's a ton of opportunity out there in that area that may, you know, may not be being tapped into at this point, and then the county money as well. So doesn't really have anything to do with it. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you want... It sounds like, unless I'm being correct, it sounds like council is comfortable with the recommendation of our financial advisor and legal counsel. Do you want to talk, Mr. Smith, a little bit about moving forward? Will we have something to consider then? Will there be an action item at our next meeting, our first meeting in June? Seems like there were meetings...
Second meeting in June? Janet?
Give me a second. Okay. We'd have a... Oh, I'm sorry. Thought you wanted that.
We'd have a bond resolution in June that would authorize the sale of the bonds and authorize the advertisement for the bonds, authorize that, and then we would come back and probably that bond resolution would authorize the mayor and Todd then to finalize the sale of the bonds.
Any objections to that? Proceed based on that timeline. Thank you, Warren. Appreciate your analysis and advice. Mr. Smith, do you want to begin a discussion? In fact, you have a very, essentially, a PowerPoint that's been copied. Do you want to begin a dialogue about the appropriate use of electronic devices if we decide as a group to acquire some?
Sure. And I can...
Be mindful too, Scott, you've got about 15 minutes, maybe keep the presentation at 10, and then we'll entertain any questions.
I'll do that. So if you go to the slide on page two, the one that says Overview, one thing that we're looking for is some directions tonight about a city policy that could apply to all persons in the city about the use of electronic devices. We want to go over a little bit of law and best practices regarding electronic devices and communications, some legal issues involved, and then, as I said, get your direction. If you go to the next page, the one that says Open Meetings Act, you understand that we've talked about this before, the public's business is to be publicly conducted. There are situations where it might not be in the public's interest to conduct its business publicly, but the law limits those situations where we can go into a closed session and talk confidentially. The concept behind the Open Meetings Act is that the public should be able to see not only the decisions and actions, but the reasons underlying them, and that, I'll get to that a little bit more. If you turn to the next page, the one that's marked four, that says Freedom of Information Act at the top, if a record is produced in the course of public business or with the use of public funds, then the public should generally have access to that record, is the point. The public should be able to see and get copies of communications and public records. And again, I'm going to get to that in terms of policy in a moment. Part of the challenge that we're facing with both the Open Meetings Act and Freedom of Information Act is that they were mid-to-late 20th century statutes that haven't been modified to address 21st century communications devices and methodologies. So we have technology now that was only dreamed up by sci-fi writers and comic book writers back in 1976, when these two statutes were adopted, and they haven't been updated to reflect that. Go to the next page, the one on OMA issues, page six. Okay. Well, the one that says OMA is...
Yeah, we're mixed up a little bit.
Page three. I think I can get with that. Generally, if the communications would violate the Open Meetings Act if they were verbal, they also violate the Open Meetings Act if they're electronic. So you can't carry on a telephone conversation from the dais during a meeting, so you similarly can't be engaging in email or in texting from the dais during a meeting. Now, I've been at meetings where council members have texted one another on the dais, and they're carrying on a private conversation. I've been at meetings where a city commissioner ordered a pizza from the dais during the meeting. The meeting was running long. I understand the motivation, but it's still not legal. The public has a right to know who or what may be communicated, who you're talking to, who might be influencing your decision. So you similarly can't be texting someone at home, or some colleague, or a staff member in the audience, or somebody else. You can't deliberate outside a meeting on one-on-one basis. You can't do a one-on-one round robin. You also can't do that electronically, okay? You can't do it by text or email if you couldn't do it verbally and in person. You can't have a quorum meet outside a meeting, because that's an Open Meetings Act violation. You can't assemble a quorum electronically similarly.
Can I stop you there? A quorum of city council cannot meet under any circumstances?
No. You can have chance meetings, you can have holy educational sessions, you can do that kind of thing, but you can't be meeting and deliberating and committing toward any decisions, and I'll get to that a little bit more in a minute. You shouldn't be viewing websites, or Wikipedia, or other information during a meeting, because all council members ought to have access to the same information. So if you're getting information from some source that isn't shared with everybody on the council, you've got a problem, particularly because those who are looking at the agenda packets and the information available to you aren't aware what else you were considering. It doesn't prevent conversations outside of meetings to share insights, questions, or If you'll notice, the Michigan Municipal League Magazine for this month came out with the review that is right on timely and says that, look, politicking outside a meeting is just fine. You can ask one another how they're inclined to vote. You can ask them what their reasoning is or thinking behind it. What you can't do is try to count the vote ahead of time and do some other kinds of things. You can ask people how they're trying to vote. You can't persuade them, you can't deliberate, you shouldn't be having a debate, and so forth. So that's why, when Todd sends out an email message, I tell you not to hit Reply All. Hit Reply to Todd and give him your views, but you can't be deliberating among yourselves.
What is this, from a standpoint?
Well, you can't have a decision made outside the meeting and then just come in the meeting and rubber stamp it. And you get the feeling when that happens, if you've ever attended a public meeting where there's absolutely no dialogue, and a very controversial issue comes up, and there's a motion, and a second, and it's done, right? You know that a conversation has occurred outside the meeting. Okay? Now, sometimes, that's appropriate. If you're coming out of a closed session, and there's conversation, there's privileged communication in a closed session, that's fine. But rarely is that the case. Freedom of Information Act issues, if you go to the next slide, it should be at the top of the next page, I believe. If it's a city device, a city app, or a city account, assume it will be public. Okay? If it's on a personal device, app, or account, and involves city business, assume it is public. Because you're a city official, assume any close calls will favor disclosure. Okay? Deleting the device does not... Deleting the message doesn't permanently rid you of that message. See Kwame Kilpatrick. Okay? And I can tell you about Kwame Kilpatrick. If you'll remember, Arthur Andersen and the Enron scandal was tripped up by some electronic communications, Anthony Weiner, Hillary Clinton, Richard Nixon. All of them had electronic trails that tracked them. Records retention, if you go to the bottom of that page. The city is required to retain records, and that's true of even text and emails. There's a record retention period that they need to be retained. Many communities are failing to comply with those requirements, because they don't have access to the text and so forth, and there's not a good way to keep text right now. If you go to the bottom of that, or the top of the next page, it will be litigation discovery. If you have litigation, if it's, if the material is relevant and material to the litigation, or it could lead to relevant and material information, they control through the city computers to try to find what's there. And similarly, if you're doing city business on your personal devices, you may find you have to hand them over to a forensic...
Analysis.
Yeah. And phishing is kind of allowed. So there are forensic reviews of devices. It's not infrequent that they happen. Now, if you go to the bottom of that page, the consequences, I'm not going to spend much time on this. Suffice to know that there are civil penalties can result, but probably the worst penalty is the media attention that you can get. An example, our current example of that is see the media attention that's being paid in the phone county clerk. And every email she sent, all kinds of things are being tracked by the media. It can, the consequences can be greater than simply invalidating the current decision, because you can, electronic devices and electronic trails and views to convict people of conspiracies as well. So a conspiracy exists if you're doing, accomplishing an illegal ends through legal means, or if you're using illegal means to accomplish illegal ends. Best practices, top of the next page. Think, front page of the Free Press, think Fox News, think Click on Detroit. If you would be embarrassed to have that communication on the front page of the Free Press or on Fox News, don't send it. Think cross-examination. If you're in a lawsuit and somebody's asking you to explain what you meant by it, or whether you really thought that joke was funny, or whether that language is the kind of language you use all of the time, think about how that's going to look and how you're going to appear. During meetings, no electronic communications. If you're in the dais during a meeting, you should not be engaging in communications using those tablets. Don't view information from the dais that's not shared by others. Now, I've had council members also look up something, and then they will share it with everybody else on the dais and say, you know, "I've gone to the city website, here's what it says," or "I've gone to the county website," or "the state website." I've even done that a few meetings back, where you asked me a question, and I was using my phone to look up a state statute to answer a question. That's okay, but other than that, you should avoid that. I would not carry on any city communications using my private phone, private app, or private accounts. Okay? Because at least during litigation, it makes you susceptible to having somebody go through that for a forensic exam. Avoid council member to council member electronic communication to the extent you can. You're much better working through the city manager's office than communicating back and forth, because it can be perceived as deliberating toward a decision. You can share some personal views, as long as you're not rebutting or deliberating. You know, there are a whole bunch of examples. I can tell you about a council member who emailed another council member about a candidate for the council. That candidate was elected, the email became public, and it wasn't very flattering. I've seen other information where a city staff member emailed a former colleague making what they thought was an ironic sarcastic joke about somebody who was threatening to sue the city and so forth. That became public, and it wasn't very flattering. So you have to, I can tell you horror story after horror story. Some people send email jokes and so forth, or attempts at humor. I would advise you, if it's the kind of humor that's inappropriate, delete it immediately, don't open it, don't do anything with it, and you've seen some of those stories, or politically-based humor, that really has no place in government policymaking. Additional practices. This is the final slide. Password, protect your devices and your apps, and don't share your password. Don't be baited into a response. Don't feel compelled to reply. Just because a constituent sends you something, doesn't mean you have to reply to that constituent if it's inappropriate to do so. You know, I tell people this all of the time, that it's a device, it's a tool to be used, it's not something that compels you to reply, doesn't compel you to engage in the communication. If the communication's not helpful, or furthering the public policy, or enhancing the public's understanding, you're probably better not send it.
Mr. Smith, we have like one minute.
Okay. The final thought is, look, if you get hacked, you receive bad messages, if you've got a problem with your device, and you think somebody's been fooling with it, call now to get help. Okay? I can, the Ottawa County Administrator, somebody hacked into his account, or planted porn on his account. As soon as he saw it, he was on the phone to the police and others, reporting it, so that it could immediately be addressed, and he couldn't be embarrassed by it later on. And I just suggest you do the same thing. From time to time, things are going to happen, somebody will hack and get a hold of your password, or you will get some material that you can't explain, and just do something about it immediately.
So, Mr. Smith, because we have to wrap up, what is the recommendation in terms of a policy in the event that we purchase devices? And actually, I guess, to a certain extent, the acquisition of devices is somewhat irrelevant, because I think regardless, there should be some sort of policy in place.
I think we ought to have an electronic media policy. Todd and I have talked about this. We ought to have a policy that also directs who can use social media on behalf of the city, how those messages are going to be directed, what the policies are for the use of city electronic devices, whether they're city-issued cell phones to staff members or whatever, what's appropriate to have on the device, what's not appropriate to have on the device, whether they're appropriate to be used for personal business or not, and there just ought to be a policy that we put into place, and if council considers or not.
Let's do this. I know that you'll be thoughtful and thorough, but at the same time, I don't know that it's necessary to reinvent the wheel, because there's a number of jurisdictions that probably have these policies in place. I'm sure you've worked with a number of jurisdictions on these policies. Could you get a draft to the city manager, or work with the city manager and staff, and get a draft to us sometime in the next month or so to review? We'll entertain any questions or suggestions, and then subsequently, I'll bring it back for debate and hopeful adoption at a council meeting. Okay? We've got to move on here, folks. So unless there's anything that is really important, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:36 PM. Moved by Gearball, is there a second? Seconded by Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries on. We are adjourned.